For information, and I guess we asked hard questions because Max didn't show up alone. No, no. But we are very interested in, really, the future impacts potentially on revenues to the county and after some operation. And I know it's, the market varies a lot of things, and physics and geology vary a lot of things, but we really just kind of want to get a feel for how this all does work. Hey, Sherry, come on up, that's okay. So, so we'd, besides ourselves, we'd invited Susan Murphy, our county assessor, Sherry Hula, who just walked in, our county treasurer, Tiffany Hermes, our finance director. I think we've met the others, but we can go around, I guess, for the camera and introduce. And I would ask folks to use the mic, just so we do capture things. And I'd really just turn it over to Grant, because he's our oil and gas guy.
Yeah. Please go ahead and introduce yourselves, so, and state what you do within GMT, so that if the public are looking, they'll be able to recognize.
All right, I'll kick us off. My name is Max Blair, I'm the regulatory manager for GMT Exploration. Thanks so much for having us down today. You know, I've been down to the county building here many, many times over the last few years to interact with staff and commission and share information about our activities, and happy to do this again. I think it's a great, great thing to do periodically.
I'm Dennis Snow, I'm VP of Operations here at GMT, and I work real closely to Max, and just so thankful to have Max on my team, that he can come down here and spend a lot of time with you folks, and help you understand what's going on, because it's kind of Kevin and I that kind of pull the stuff together, to get the projects together for Max to go and permit. So, any questions you got, fire away, we'll do our best to answer them.
My name's Kevin Andrews, I'm the chief financial officer of GMT Exploration, and we just appreciate the opportunity to come here and meet with you guys. We take our social responsibility to operate and help the county very seriously, so thank you.
Yeah, Chris, we cut our slides from 50 to 20, so we might get done. Okay. All right. Might be happy with that, we learned.
Now, the reason I asked Max for this session is I felt it was very important that we as administrators in the county, and also the public, have some general information of what's happened in the past, where we're at now, and where we're going in terms of financial impacts, presence. And when I say financial, I'm talking about property taxes, but also things like oil and gas royalties and all those. And you don't have to be specific at how it's to the county, but how, administration, but how it impacts the county overall.
Yeah, Grant, we threw a few slides together, kind of give you a high level, and then probably on like details on tax revenue and stuff is, I think what we'll do here is write down the questions, and then Kevin and his group can come down and meet with the assessor, and those sorts of things is what we were thinking. And then anybody has wants more specifics, I kind of did some hypothetical stuff for this meeting, so.
And the other thing, maybe it's in your slides, the evolution of technology for the oil and gas, horizontal wells, the frac procedures, and expectations.
Yeah, you've got to be careful asking that, because we could be here a while. Chris is expecting.
You're going to be back up to 100 slides.
Get the 50 slide back out.
I hate to tell you, Grant, but some of those are the ones we deleted, but we will be, we're happy to entertain questions.
We hit some high level ones, to kind of give a flavor.
And without further ado, let me start the slide presentation, and then, and I'm happy to take questions as we go, and then we can save the more detailed ones for the end, perhaps. So again, thank you for letting us present today. We plan to cover a little bit of background, some planning that we've done at GMT, our activity levels, and then going forward plans, costs, economics, and then have some Q and A at the end. Who's GMT? We're a private company, we've been in business, based in Colorado here, for about 20 years. We've developed projects all over the country, including Alaska, Wyoming, Mexico, we're currently active in Canada and in Colorado. And we're a very small company, I think we, we have less than 25 employees, I'm not sure of the exact count at the moment. So, let me give a little bit of background. Albert County's seen oil and gas development for decades, long before GMT arrived. And what you see on the left is what we would refer to as conventional vertical oil and gas development. That's what the county has currently had before the, we started drilling horizontal wells. So, in the old days of oil and gas, we were looking at conventional reservoirs, basically porous rock, that contains hydrocarbons. We'd drill a vertical well down into that zone, much like a water well, and would essentially deplete the hydrocarbons from a zone around that wellbore. But it would require multiple wells to reach all of the hydrocarbons in that reservoir. On typical spacing, 10 acre spacing, you could have, you know, 30 or 60 wells in a section of land to deplete, to access those minerals. What we're doing today is depicted more on the right-hand side of the screen here, what we call horizontal development. So first, the old conventional reservoirs are mostly depleted. There's very few new development in conventional reservoirs. There's people going back and squeezing the few last drops out of conventional reservoirs all over the place, but very little new. What we're developing in Albert County is a shale formation, the Niobrara, we refer to it as, and it is very tight, meaning that it has a lot of porosity, and it has a lot of hydrocarbon locked up in those pores, but those pores are not connected to each other. They're hydraulically very tight, and the only way to access those is with the technology that we use, referred to as hydraulic fracturing or fracking. We will drill these horizontal wells through the Niobrara Formation for up to, you know, anywhere from a mile to three miles. We have some four-mile projects planned in Colorado now. And then, if we, if we only drilled the well and tried to produce it, we would get zero if, or very, very little hydrocarbon from that well. It's hydraulic fracturing that really unlocks those minerals from the pore space and allows us to produce these wells. And that's the kind of development we have here in Albert County. Here at GMT, we employ a whole slew of what we refer to as best management practices in the industry. This is a term that you'll see at the state level as well, it's a term of art, I guess I would say. But we listed a few around, around our operations, specifically here in Albert County. So first and foremost, the best management practice is picking a good site to begin with. That means a site that is as far from existing development and homes as possible, that has limited impact on surrounding wildlife, or sensitive environmental resources, cultural resources, all of those things. So, we do a lot of work on the front end to select a site that is suitable for development. During development, we work hard to ensure we manage noise from these operations, and that includes using what we call a quiet frac fleet, which is engineered to limit sound emitted from all the different engines and pumps used on the facility. We're working on utilizing electric drilling rigs, although that requires a substantial grid, power grid to support, and that doesn't really exist for us here in Albert County, but some of the developments we have further to the north, we're looking into those options. And then, sound walls during drilling and fracturing to simply absorb or reflect sound away from a sensitive receptor. We, we are selecting our sites and using horizontal drilling with multiple wells on a single pad to reach much larger areas than we could in the past. And then with regard to emissions from these sites, there's a, there are hundreds and hundreds of pages of regulations in the state of Colorado and the US EPA that we're required to observe and comply with, and they're all focused on reducing emissions from this type of development. We use what we call closed-loop systems in a number of ways. We no longer vent stray gas, or gas that we can't capture in somewhere, we don't vent it to the atmosphere, we try to capture it and compress it and put it in a pipeline, and if we can't do that, we combust it and destroy those emissions to more common basic components like carbon dioxide and water vapor, rather than hydrocarbons. We're utilizing pipelines, we have a natural gas pipeline that we built here in Albert County, and rights to construct oil and water lines, and we're still exploring the need and costs and benefits of developing those, that infrastructure. LDR, if you're not familiar with that term, stands for Leak Detection and Repair. That is another term used at the state level. We have a program in place where we use inspectors, and there's a photo in the upper right-hand side here, the individual in that photo is using a very specialized camera, infrared camera, that can detect emissions from our equipment. So, small leaks that in the past would be very hard to find, we can now detect them with this camera, we perform these inspections on a periodic basis, and we make repairs immediately if possible. There's some rules around the timing of our response there, but that has made the industry more efficient and much cleaner. We use pneumatic controllers, so we have instrument air on our sites, basically an air tank and compressor, and if we need to open or close a valve, in the past, we might have used the gas, the pressure in the system, the gas to operate that, but it would have to bleed that gas to the atmosphere. The cost of that gas is very minimal, and it was the most efficient way to do it in the past. Well, with, with concerns around emissions and climate change, the industry's been pushed towards using instrument air and pneumatic controllers, so we are now using that to operate some of this equipment. And some of those valves and other equipment are operated electronically as well. And then lastly, we, we use drones to perform inspections, both on our land impacts, like revegetation and weed management, but also we can do inspections of facilities with drones. And then, the data analytics piece, it's simply ensuring that we are optimizing our operations and our economic investments on these projects to, to ensure that it's sustainable.
One thing to add to that, Max, is for me, LDR is probably the biggest thing, biggest adder to the industry, because just being able to go out there, some of us are old school, you know, it was just, you trusted the operator, you put soap on a valve to see if it's leaking, but now, we're on top of it, and nothing leaks on our pads, so that's really good. One thing we didn't add to this list, and I was thinking about it, is we're starting to electrify our field. So we just hired, we just gave Core a big check, thanks to Kevin, and they're doing a dropdown on our site down on 178, so we're going to electrify those four pads along 178 this year. So, that's a big win. The tough part is, is you guys know, we've listened to a few of your meetings, it's tough, Core's got a lot of work to do to get power down to this part of the world. So we were trying to get it to our north pads, but their substation, I think, is scheduled for 25, I believe, before we can electrify those pads. So those are a couple of things we're looking at. Does everybody know where our field is, where we're kind of operating at, up there off county line, towards the Arapahoe border and off of 178?
Yeah.
We've got some maps coming up, but, so, good.
Thanks, Dennis. Let me, let me cover a little bit about the industry in Colorado. You may have heard that there were some bills proposed this year that were potentially damaging to the industry, that work's still ongoing. However, the biggest one, SB 24159, is my understanding that last week, there was an ag committee meeting that essentially postponed that bill indefinitely, which we see as very good news. And the reason being is that, one, we're, we're an active developer in the state of Colorado, that would have been a big impact on our plans in Albert County and in other parts of the state, and it would have had a big impact on the economy of the state. Colorado's industry is extremely well-regulated, it's very high-tech. We believe that we're developing these minerals responsibly and in a safe manner. Colorado is the fourth-largest oil producer in the United States, the United States is the largest oil producer in the world today. Colorado's the eighth-largest natural gas producer in the United States. And I will just make a pitch here, that if you care about the environment, you care about the, the environmental cost of hydrocarbons in your life, then you should demand that your oil come from Colorado. This is the cleanest place for it to be produced. Cutting off the supply that comes from Colorado will not curb demand. You're still going to drive to work in your car, you're still going to heat your home, and so will everyone else in America. So what's going to happen is that oil will come from somewhere else, and if you look elsewhere from Colorado, the options are less clean, and that includes Saudi Arabia, Russia, Venezuela. So, in my opinion, you should demand that your oil come from Colorado, and from GMT, because we make a great product. Colorado provide, the industry provides more than 300,000 jobs in the state, contributes $30 billion to the economy as of 2021, according to PricewaterhouseCooper. In 2022, directly contributed $1.9 billion in state and local tax revenue, 1.2 in property tax revenue, 432 million of that went to schools at the state level, 768 million went to fire police, cities, counties, other local services. So, we're, we're a big part of this economy, we're proud to be a big part of this economy. You know, I'm not going to say we're happy to pay our taxes when they come to here, but we will be paying them, as do, as do, and as assessed appropriately, and, and, you know, we're, it's a part of the process. So let's, let's get into our development a little bit.
We'll, we'll show a plot, Grant, but you're exactly right, a life of a well's 20 to 30 years, but most of the cash comes out the first three years, three to five years. Just to pile on to Max's slide, I'm all jazzed up, I went to a presentation this morning by Liberty Energy, and they spend a lot of time on this, is that 70% of our energy needs in the world come from oil and natural gas, and it's not going away. And that's, as Chris Wright was explaining, that's just a fact, we're not trying to rub that in, or, that's just the nature of the beast. It's cheap energy, and it provides a lot of needs to the community, helps with cheap medical care. Just a little bit of some information on wind and solar, is spending on wind and solar in the last year has increased every year up to a trillion dollars a year, and if you look at the energy supply of wind and solar, it's flat. So what's that saying is, oil and natural gas are really the energy of the, for the near future. Wind and solar is not going to fill the need. So, it's something important, but that's why, you know, as this guy was saying, the best way to help with climate change, and I believe this, is to do big energy projects in the US where it's regulated, versus internationally, where they usually switch to coal, and they don't have the regulations to control it. Anyway, I'm off my soap ops, let's talk about oil and gas.
Let's get through the presentation. So, we're going to go way back in time here, and give you a little idea of what we're, what we're doing. The Niobrara shale formation is at about 8,000 feet below the surface here in Albert County, that's how deeply drilled. This was part of the large western interior seaway from 80 million years ago, and what, there was a shoreline against the Rocky Mountains, and that shoreline moved in time, in space and time, many, 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 many times, there were periods of deposition and erosion, and more deposition, erosion. And these chalk and shale deposits that we have are, were, it's basically ancient biomass that grew on these shorelines that decayed and buried in sediment, and ultimately buried down now to 8,000 feet below the surface. This all, this was all deposited and created, starting about 80 million years ago, and that's the formation that we're accessing. On the right-hand side, we have a stratigraphic column that Pierre Shale goes down to about 8,000 feet, and Niobrara's only a few hundred feet thick, depending on where you are in the basin, and then there's some other potential hydrocarbon formations below the Niobrara, the Codel and the Green Horn have been productive for some operators in some areas, but that's, that's our target, in Albert County. This slide, we were talking a little bit about technological advances, I think I covered this already, that, you know, the old days, we were drilling vertical wells into conventional formations, much like a water well. Today, we're drilling two and a half plus mile horizontal wells, we're drilling down 8,000 feet, getting a target that's only maybe 50 feet thick, turning the bit horizontally, and drilling two and a half miles laterally, and steering as we go through that 50-foot target, to make these wells productive and economically viable. Ah, that helps. So, I talked us through all of that, but that, that is a not-to-scale view of what we're doing here in Albert County. And I'll point out that there are a number of aquifers that we drill through to reach these hydrocarbon formations. In Albert County, there's four that I'm aware of, we've got a shallow, confined aquifer, and then you've got... Several that... ...go down to about 2,200 feet. And by Colorado rules, we have engineering protections to ensure that those aquifers are not impacted by our development. We'll drill through all of those aquifers with water-based drilling mud, much like a water well we utilize. We'll set a steel pipe and cement the entire string of pipe around the outside, so we'll put cement down through that pipe, and up around the outside, the annulus, we call it, all the way to surface. We'll perform a cement bond log to ensure that that, that cement can set and fill all the voids that may exist between that pipe and the surrounding rock. And then we'll continue drilling down all the way to our target, set another, set a casing, another steel pipe, and cement that influence. So, we're creating engineered physical barriers to protect the hydrocarbons we're going to produce from the aquifers that have penetrated into our wells.
I was just going to add, two quick things, when we drill the wells, we have downhole motors, and essentially like your GPS in your car, we're measuring where we're at down holes, we know where we're at. And then when we fracture, treat, we have programs where we only treat about 200 feet at a time, that's why it takes us a little bit to frac, because we've got to kind of move our way up the hole, we just can't do it all at once, so that helps us strategically or surgically place that frac.
This is, this is really just for my benefit, to tell you how hard my job is.
Next, next.
So, you know, the permitting process, as you might imagine, has become more complicated over the years as well, but we've got a number of steps we follow, and, you know, engaging the community is very high on our list, and starting out, reaching out to our neighbors, our stakeholders, whether they be mineral owners, or surface owners, or boats, or folks that are in proximity to the project, but not, not affected directly by any of the actual developments. That, that's a big part of the process for us, but ultimately, there are a lot of steps, and it can take quite a bit of time. Current, our current timelines, our budget for planning these projects is nine to 12 months from start to finish, and a lot of that is driven by the state process today.
Just to pile on on that, Max, we, we work with probably two to three agencies, maybe four agencies to get those going. We work with the state, and we work with the county, and we try to do those in parallel so they match, get approval about the same time, and then also Max has to work with the land board, and sometimes we have to work with the BLM, depending on where we're at.
And the state helps.
Oh, CDPE with the air stuff, thank you. So, yeah, those are the agencies we're primarily dealing with.
And Colorado Parks and Wildlife. Oh, and, and the Department of Water Resources. No, going, touching a little more on community engagement, you know, again, this is something that we, we enjoy, I think the most fun part of my job is communicating with members of the public, reaching out, sharing information about our projects, these photos, you might recognize the upper right, that's Albert County Fair, and the lower left, bottom center, that's one of the community meetings we go up here in Albert County. It looks like it was Christmas time, I think, though, in the picture, but that was, that was for, I believe, for a pipeline project, that's Dennis, so, and then at the center, it's another meeting that, currently, what they now call ECNS, or the CEAS, although I think it's a virtual one. One thing I'll point out is that rigging and field tours are something we always love to do, we've extended that up, and everyone in the county can pass, and we'll extend that again, depending on who went here, who's interested in joining us to, to, for our operations, our facilities, to reach out to me or Dennis, and we'll happily set it up and show you this, the first thing. We'll go through a little bit about the life of a well, Dennis mentioned, these wells can, can be in service for 20 to 30 years. We, we take some time, 12 months typically, maybe longer, to plan and permit the well, after months to construct the well pad. Drilling these, believe it or not, these wells that are 8,000 feet down, two and a half miles long, 14,000, 12,000 to that, also, we measured that at 2,000 feet, we can drill that in about 10 minutes, sometimes even quicker. But when we have a multi-well pad, when we're drilling five, six, 10 wells on that pad, we try to set it up so that the rig can skid over and drill wells in sequence. So, if we're drilling five wells on a pad, it may take 45 minutes to complete that work. The drilling rig is big, it requires multiple loads to bring onto the site, it's got crews that are working on 24/7, on 12-hour shifts, there's traffic, it's pretty difficult, which it's a, it's a big operation, and it can be disruptive to the surrounding areas, so we do our best to mitigate those issues with sound walls, with timing of our operations, good haul routes that we analyze and work with the county to select, to ensure that they're focused for the meetings, haul operations. Hydraulic fracturing, again, it takes 10 to 30 days on the site, we can, we can frac a single well in about five days, with the stations that we've got set up, but again, if we're doing multiple wells on the site, it can take 10 to 30 days, depending on how many are in scope of that project. Once we, once that equipment boots off, and we move into production operations, it's much quieter, smaller, less, less impactful operation, and that's what we have in going on now, on Long County Route 178, on 17.
The Covota dealership, just, you know, going west, that's about two and a half miles, and so, we're able to drill two and a half miles, keep it in a very, Dennis's team, the smart guys, keep it in a very sort of tight area, using technology and software that we use, it truly is incredible.
And then lastly, I'll just mention, when these wells have reached their, the end of their economic life, we have commitments to fully reclaim and restore the site, that we have commitments, one, property owners, we're usually there by virtue of the surface we're supporting, and we have obligations of the county permits, and obligations of the state permits, so we do our best to leave that site at good or better conditions, we count on. All right, let's move into a little bit more specifics. So, the photo here, you're seeing, it's our Vulcan pad, that's the first horizontal pad, you know, the first horizontal well that GMT drilled in Albert County, we drilled back in 2021, brought it online late in 21, and did what we call a production test on that well, to ensure that all of our science and predictions were correct, and they were, we had a good result. We ran the test back for 60 days approximately, under state rules, and then we had to shut it in, because we didn't have a pipeline. And constructing that pipeline was a major undertaking, certainly not something we were going to do without knowing that this, this project would, would return economically. Um, this is the frac on that first well, so, uh, Dennis, do you wanna walk them through what we've seen for the method?
Yeah, uh, no problem. Uh, if you kinda look at the left hand, my left-hand side, you'll see the big tank. So we're, uh, we run lay flat lines from these ponds up in Rappahoe County. We bring that water down and we put it in those tanks. If you look to the right, there's a series of trucks. Those are what we call pump trucks. So what we do is we have to take that water, we mix it with sand, we mix it with a few chemicals that are pretty much, you can find those in your kitchen. And then we send that downhole to, uh, put the, uh, to crack the rock and put sand down. Um, you might see that little U-shaped barrier to the, uh, bottom side of the picture. We call that the sandbox. We'll have a little better picture of that. And then that's where we, uh, load and unload the sand and then we mix it. And we have what we call a blender just to the right or towards the upper part of the screen that takes that sand, puts it on conveyor belt and then mixes it. So. So yeah, I'd be glad, anybody, any of you are welcome to do a tour. We'll probably be fracking later this year, so, uh, glad to take you out there. It's pretty fascinating.
Pump sand down to, you push that water in?
Exactly right. We, um, initiate a, a small crack and then we fill it with sand to keep it open for permeability.
Another term used for that sand is a box within the crack.
Yep, that's a good way.
Create. Um, so this is another view of, uh, of a frac job on the left-hand side. That, that crane is basically lined up over the wellhead and that, uh, supports the, uh, the equipment that, um, the hydraulic slur, slurry of, of sand, water and small amounts of chemical that pump downhole. On the right-hand side is the backyard, so that's what Dennis referred to with. The technology and use here is really quite remarkable, so, uh, this is another area where the industry has improved significantly over the years. The first early days of, of horizontal development, hydraulic fracturing, we can bring trucks, sand trucks out and literally dump the sand like we're at a, uh, gravel pit. Dump it into a pile or into another vessel and move that sand through, um, chutes and hoppers and, uh, and create a lot of dust. And, uh, what we're using here is a containerized system. The upper left of that photo, you can kinda see the, one, one box. It's, it's, they're stacked on top of each other, but they're containerized sandboxes. They, they're each designed to carry a specific mass of sand that's, uh, legal load for the highway that's brought in by truck. And once it's said, um, it will move that sand into the, uh, stream for the hydraulic fracturing, all on a vacuum system. So there's virtually no dust. The workers on the site, uh, and the surrounding air quality is not affected by these operations. And, um, it's, it's a very efficient, um, and very clean way to do it. It's a great prevention of infrastructure. Here, it's, we strive to improve the, uh, the process. Um, so we're fast forwarding quite a bit here. We, we completed our drilling and our hydraulic fracturing and now we're producing the well. These are some photos of production equipment on our open facility. Um, on the upper left is our tank battery. Uh, that's where we store produced water and oil. It's all in the truck to market or to dispose on. We're kind of disposing our, uh, produced water in wealth county. Uh, there's a question, is there a better, uh, uh, approach? Uh, the bottom left is a three-way separator, uh, that will, uh, take the emotion of oil, gas and water that comes out of the wellhead and separate it into those different parts, uh, use its gravity versus baffles and just a little bit of time, sometimes heat to get the oil, water and gas all separated from each other. The gas will stick up top and send through the pipelines, market the oil, uh, it's lighter than water, so it's getting up the top. It's into the oil tanks, the water, and it's taking off the bottom and sending to the water tanks. Uh, upper right, that's what we call an E C D or a combustor. So any natural gas or other hydrocarbons that we cannot capture and sell down the pipeline are directed to that E C D. They're destroyed to have minimum ninety-five percent efficiency, but the operating efficiency is eighty percent. Uh, and convert those hydrocarbons to carbon dioxide, uh, much, much better emissions for greenhouse gas emissions there, like hydrocarbons. And then the photo at the bottom right is our, from our electric, uh, panel rack, all of the controllers for, uh, the various, you know, you know, thousands of, of pieces of equipment, valves, uh, sensors, all of that things through the panel. And it's all connected, uh, via, um, state, uh, telemetry to our, to our headquarters and to our operators. And we have operators that can literally, they, if something is, is not operating correctly, they can, they can learn on the phone a text message and they can correct it potentially right there on the phone or on the computer, uh, or it gives them the, a reason to go visit that particular site. Uh, respect, uh, for the problem. And that's up to including shutting down the entire site, uh, if there's something, something that they can manage.
I think, I think you said it very well, Max. The key is we can shut down anywhere. We can shut remotely, we can shut down on-site for safety. And that, there's a lot of brains in this, um, box where we usually have an operator there during the day and not there at night because the machine will run. But typically when we start our operations, we'll have twenty-four, when it's, that's usually the, uh, most uncertainty is when we're first bringing the well on, we'll have twenty-four hour coverage with people and then we'll switch over to, uh, automation. Or it'll be automated, but we got guys watching it.
Um, so here's, uh, moving again a little more into the specifics. So, um, we, this is combined tenderfoot and GMT activity, uh, over the last two years. Um, twenty twenty-two, uh, is when we built, uh, our first fourteen miles of pipeline that took us from the Vulcan pad initially up to, uh, uh, sales point in Rappahoe County, in connection to an existing line, uh, which, which gave us our first access to the market. Uh, we're selling that gas through the supply path of our operator, the Rappahoe and, uh, Adams. For, in twenty twenty-three, uh, we, um, we built some additional, uh, pipeline. Uh, we brought a compressor online to help move the gas, uh, out of the field here up to market. Um, and we, uh, we also built some additional wells with, uh, other storage. Um, and, uh, now in twenty twenty-four, um, we are waiting for a new connection. We turned on to R M N, that's running out of midstream, we need some pipeline. Um, and, uh, it's very difficult to see on this map and know, but the red line terminates at, uh, Adams County, uh, just across I-7, the, uh, the intersection of, uh, Noah Road. That's Tweed, Watkins and Bennett, the north side of I-7. We have a connection there. Our, the, the pipe is all plugged up, but we're waiting for them to, uh, commission and, uh, internal and the compressor to turn it. But what that will do for us, as we say here, we're gonna, we expect to see better runtime on our equipment, uh, which is, which means more production. Uh, better pricing on how that gas is sold to market, but percentage is taken from the transportation costs. And, uh, will enable our core business to, to thrive, certainly just to make more investment in, uh, development. Uh, because without, uh, a reliable, um, marginal pipeline connection, it's very difficult for us to, uh, develop a mission of ours. Uh, it's, there are components of it that fly back to, uh, that bottom. Essentially, what we have today is a two-lane road and, uh, when this connection gets turned on, we'll have a, we'll have a highway to transport us to. Um. It, 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 um, it's, it's commissioned, but it is not in service. But, uh, all of those components are in, uh, that's Rappahoe and, uh, no, our, our tenderfoot system is in Elbert County. Boy, that's a great question. Uh, I have that in a, in a, in Elbert, yeah. And you will see a file of that support this way. Um, but, uh, so, uh, twenty-five, twenty, twenty, we, we have a good plan for twenty-four here, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, you know, there may be, uh, other, other improvements in investment in infrastructure, but that's, that's still to be determined. Um, let's talk a little bit about, uh, wells now. So that was, that was all pipeline, uh, development. This is, um, our current well count in Elbert County is eleven wells. We have, uh, one on the Crystal Ruby pad, it's a crystal well, one on the Irwin Taylor pad, one on the Marble Redstone pad, one on the Cinnamon pad. Um, we have five producing wells on the Vulcan pad. Oh, and I missed, I'm sorry, one on the Redstone going to the south. Uh, and then last is a similar well on the Ragged pad, it's called the Red Lady. Um, this map is probably not all that helpful to folks that, uh, are familiar with the road network. But, uh, County Road one seventy-eight runs just to the south of those three pads, the Crystal, Irwin and Marble. The Vulcan is, um, on a little bit west of Box Elder and a mile and a half south of County Line Road. Um, where, and the Ragged is drilled parallel to and south of County Line Road. So hopefully that helps, more than just a little bit of that. Uh, sure, it's, uh, so I'll, I'll start at the top this time. The Ragged well, uh, Ragged well pad has the similar wells called the Red Lady. That well is, uh, the, the wellhead is only a couple hundred yards south of County Line Road, just west of Box Elder. Right on the border with, uh, Rappahoe County. Uh, the well is two and a half miles long and it's eight thousand feet down and it's, it's essentially doing a parallel with County Line Road back towards, um, towards Delta. Um, the Vulcan is, that pad is located about a mile and a half south of County Line and west of Box Elder. And then the rest of those pads, Cinnamon, Marble, Irwin, Crystal, Redstone, they're all accessed via County Road one seventy-eight. Uh, the cinnamon access is, is right at the intersection of one seventy-eight and thirteen. We drilled the cinnamon in twenty twenty-three.
All right, uh, Dennis? So this gets to, uh, your question, Grant, is, um, this is what, what us, uh, reservoir production engineers look at. And so this plot here is on the bottom, that is, uh, months and on the side, that is oil rate. So as you can see, these wells, we anticipate them coming on between seven hundred and eight hundred barrels of oil a day. But if you can kinda read the fine print at the bottom, when, uh, one year later, that well's making two hundred barrels of oil a day. And then if you go out about thirty, another, about eighteen months, that well's making a hundred barrels of oil a day. So basically in the first three to five years, that's when you make the bulk of your money, but you're still making good money. And then that well just kinda chugs along for another twenty years. So what we do is you can see all the, you can see one heavy, uh, line there. That's the average performance of the wells that we use to base our forecasts and our cash flows. But all those lines behind there, the gray light colored line, that is actual well performance in a certain area that we use to try to develop analogous production. So we study all those wells, look at the way they completed them and try to develop a forecast looking at these wells. And then just to keep you in mind, this, it takes a little bit to play in this game. These wells cost six to ten million dollars to do that. And to run pipeline, we're kinda anywhere in that half, half a million to a million dollars a mile to run a good-sized gathering line. So it, costs do kinda add up.
And to get to that point, we are ready to drill a well, spend the ten million dollars to drill that well. We've had to, uh, collect an enormous amount of data, secure mineral leases, the issue with each mineral owner, secure leases, pay, uh, bonuses. Um, do a lot of engine acts, so the, the initial investment, um, isn't even accounted for in that per well cost. But in the industry, we, we, we calculate a lot of these economics on a, a well-by-well basis.
Correct. So kinda keep that curve in mind as we go to the next slide. So I, so kinda running through, here's kinda the economics of what we play with. So just kinda running through the bullet list to the left, as we generate the forecast, it's like I just said. So GMT's drilled eleven wells in our play. Right now, we have two wells that are above forecast. We have two wells slightly below forecast. We got four wells doing what we want them to do and we have seven wells below forecast. So, so one of the wells, we kinda tested the limits of the play. And because of this well performance, that's kinda slowed our activity. I don't know if you remember, Grant, Chris, we were talking about really getting after it and we kinda slowed our pace down and I think Max messaged that to you. And that's because of these seven wells. And this, if you go back or if you can kinda visualize that map, you know, our Red Lady well's doing very well, the northern part of Vulcan's doing well. Our Crystal well's doing well, but we kinda got this little pocket in the middle, the old donut reservoir, as I call it. But we got a little pocket there that we're making a little more water, uh, in that area. And we haven't quite figured out the exact frac recipe, flowback recipe to make that work. And we're working that a little bit. So that's why this, we've kinda slowed our development, but I, we're gonna most likely drill four to five more wells this year. And hopefully it's in twenty-five, twenty-six, we'll really get that development thing going. Um, if you go to that plot to the right, is, this is kinda where eighty-dollar oil goes. So if you can look at, I have early life and late life. And this is kinda hypothetical look at where the cash goes for every eighty dollars we get for a barrel. So that bottom wedge, it's, I think it's a purplish color or greenish color, that's royalty. So we, in order to get those mineral leases, we have to go out there and negotiate that and that's how we negotiated. We give them a cut right off the top, twenty, fifteen to twenty percent. So that goes straight out. The next, the orange wedge is state and local taxes, which is around ten percent. And then the next part is operating cost. That's the green bucket. Now, you're gonna kinda see here is our operating costs right now are hovering around twenty dollars a barrel. We need to get those down to eight to ten. That's kinda the industry average. And the reason they're a little higher, Grant, is that little water pocket, we're moving a little more water than what we anticipated. So we gotta, kinda gotta fix our recipe. Then the next piece is what I call capital or Kevin likes to call D D and A rate. When you first start out the play, we're spending about forty dollars a barrel to get this going. And we gotta inject this capital into the profit, into the project. And then we have a little bit of overhead to pay for our salaries and office space, and then you have profit on top. So we're barely making any money right now. But what the key is, is we gotta get to the later life where I, we get some momentum, I can start spreading my off costs around. We start drilling the wells faster, we do pad drilling, and then so our investment needs go down, our profit goes up. We take a portion of that profit, pay back the guys that gave us cash to get going, and then we're kinda off to the races, we're self-funding. So that's just kinda gives you flavor of what we look at when we're running capital.
When you talk about the technical recipe, you're really talking about the recipe for the frac fluids?
That's the biggest, uh, needle, needle mover on cost. But a good example is, is like the first well we drilled out here took us ten days. Uh, we have two wells we drilled under seven days. So just practicing on eleven wells, that saves you twenty percent on the drill costs. And that's usually, usually how it goes. We'll probably save another ten or twenty percent on drilling as we learn and then it just keeps going.
Previous, uh, slide there on the horizontal section, talking about frac stages. Back when I was a young engineer, two-stage frac was a big one. These are, these are twenty and-
Sixty. We do sixty on a two-and-a-half mile lateral.
Sixty stages, two hundred feet at a time.
Yep. The frac design isn't just fluid, it's, it's how much water you're pumping down, it's how much sand we're using, to what rate, what pressure, all that stuff.
A lot of times there's a kind of a risk reward equation there, you know, with a bigger frac, more sand and water, probably is going to result in more oil production. However, we're spending more for those inputs. So it's really trying to find that balancing point, that sweet spot between the capital investment and return on that specific investment. We're working on that stuff.
We're always wanting to be, uh, fiddling with that recipe. Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah. That's, that's what engineers do. Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah. That's, that's what engineers do.
What's the, uh, general timeframe for early life versus?
I, I would say that's three to five years. Um, and then, Grant, this is a question that you've asked, and I, I, I'm not sure what the best way to show this is. On a two-and-a-half-mile lateral, that's six forty plus six forty plus three twenty.
Sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred acres. So if you own eighty acres, you would have five percent in that well. And then you'd get twenty percent royalty. So you would get a check at three thousand dollars a month for one well.
And then the other thing is, is when you drill multiple wells at a single location, they are, uh, the well bores themselves, are they parallel or perpendicular to each other?
They're parallel, you know, we'll go here and then we fan them out.
Yeah, we, we haven't covered that at all, but there's a whole lot, uh, regulated at the state level on how we lay out what we call a drilling and spacing unit, and how we pool the mineral interests that are within that drilling and spacing unit. We're establishing units, we'll go back, uh, these black boxes with, with labels associated with them, Ruby, Taylor, Redstone, Crystal, those are, are drilling and spacing units. So every mineral owner, least mineral owner or unleast mineral owner within those black boxes would participate in the well drilled within the box. We had plans to drill multiple wells within each of those boxes. The only place we've done that so far is on the Vulcan pad, we have five producing wells in the same drilling and spacing unit. Everywhere else, we just have a single well. We have rights and plans and, and hope to drill more wells in each of those boxes, but we've got to ensure that the, the fundamental economic, uh, return on those investments.
Sound.
We've, we've got investors to answer to, we've got, uh, we've got to repay our costs. So we, we have been going a little slower than we hoped, um, and that's to ensure that the next project we drill is successful.
Just one other silly question. As I notice the shape of your boxes there, it looks like some of them are designed for east-west wells and some are designed for north-south wells.
Great, great question.
Uh, is there a difference in the nature of, uh, the productivity?
That, I'll, I'll answer the first part, and I'm letting, let the second part go.
Right.
Dennis, um, Grant, the, the, the boxes are laid out primarily due to, um, surface constraints and our ability to actually, uh, identify viable surface locations and the minerals that we could leave. So some of this happens over time, and, uh, and the, this drilling and spacing units are, uh, a combination of, uh, idealized engineering or, or geologic conditions plus real world layers and factors, surface constraints, surface locations. Um, but as far as whether east-west or north-south is better, you know, pass that one to Dennis.
Thanks, Max. Um, before we decided to go north-south and east-west and mix that, we studied the whole DJ basin. And in general, east-west is better than north-south, but usually it's just a small percentage. It's usually five to ten percent. And, uh, internally, we have this big debate because, uh, and that's, you observed this right away, is the wells I kind of pointed out are our better wells, are the east-west wells. And our north-south wells aren't quite as good. So we're debating if we should maybe have to turn these east-west to get better wells. But that Crystal well performed fairly well, so we're thinking it's not a north-south issue. So we still got a little bit of work to do on that.
Um, Dennis, this one's?
The, the, uh, revenue, um, just looking at the plot to the right, once again, I have production down on the bottom, and I have barrels of oil per month right there. So keep in mind, forty thousand barrels per month is a hundred, thirteen hundred barrels of oil per day. So Elbert County oil production right now is ninety-eight percent GMT. So the blue line is Elbert, and the green line's GMT, so you?
Yeah, the blue line we got from the state, uh, ECMC debt. If anyone is not familiar with that, I'm happy to share how you can access that. You can see what production is reported on a monthly basis across the state. And so that's publicly available data, and I appreciate that in public.
So we're hoping to see this trend continue to grow, because we, we're hoping to drill five more wells this year in twenty-four, so that trend should keep going up. And I know it's going to keep going up February, March, if production's up. Um, just to give you a flavor of how we've helped Elbert County, I pulled our accounting records since we've started operating, we've paid seven hundred thousand dollars in fees. You guys correct me if I got those numbers wrong. We pay local ad valorem tax, five to seven percent. We're, we're putting that data together right now. And then we pay states, state severance tax of five percent. And if you read the data, fifty percent of that's supposed to go back to local governments.
Now, now, before your treasurer, five percent, what, what the heck?
Uh, yes, please, please help me, Max. I'm digging you a hole.
This has been a real challenge for me, uh, in, in my career, in that there's a very long lag between the actual, uh, start of oil and gas development and the, the start of activity and the return in ad valorem tax that comes with that. So, um, you know, a, a barrel of oil that we produced on January second, two thousand and two, the ad valorem tax bill for that is going to be paid. So we're looking at a two and a half.
I hope you meant twenty-two, not two thousand and two.
I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
What's that one?
If somebody's listening, yeah, twenty-twenty-two, two and a half, almost two and a half years ago, the, the tax, the ad valorem tax bill on that barrel of oil is still due. We have the bill where we have the check, I think. We, we don't want that either, no, absolutely not. No, we accrue, uh, accord, in accordance with accounting, because we're in the state department. So we, we have been setting aside cash. That's right, and our, our ad valorem bill for, for that, uh, that year is five hundred and twenty-five thousand, and that'll, that'll come out in the next, next year or so. Our, our team, we're, Susan and, uh, prepared, the, we prepared that, the ad valorem, um, filings in, um, the spring of last year, went through a process of, uh, review and assessment and, and.
All right. I think that's it.
Yeah, we made it to the end. Good job.
Yeah, a little better than average, Max.
Uh, I, I think we were scheduled until four. I apologize if we didn't leave enough time for Q and A, but I'm happy, we are here to answer questions if we have them.
I would like the financial people to ask any questions, anything like that.
Thanks for coming.
Um, I think actually your last slide, detailing the, um, the fifty percent to local government and just letting us know about what you guys filed for the ad valorem was very important. I mean, what do you think, Sherry?
E, ECMC.
They still, they?
They still underclass.
Yeah, they still have, um.
Oh, I don't think that.
Susan, thank.
They still have some things to fix on their website, but E, Energy and Carbon Management Commission is the new name for Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation.
Yes, and so in my research for two thousand and twenty-three, production slash personal property oil and gas equipment, and looking up the orphaned and abandoned wells, that for, um, every permit that you pull at the state, you're working on, um, reclamation of an abandoned and orphaned well that's filed bankruptcy in our county. And so for every well, um, that you have set up for, um, for, at the COGCC, they have you reclaim another oil and gas well that's been orphaned and abandoned. I've noticed that I've been able to deactivate, and I'm sure the landowners are very happy about that as well. So that's all I had to say about that, so.
That's a great observation. So there's a couple of things going on there. Um, one, uh, in order to develop these horizontal wells, uh, there are some pretty stringent rules in place to ensure that our new development won't cause a permanent impact on an existing well board that's penetrated the same formation. So when we hydraulically fracture our wells near an older well, there is a, a chance that the pressures and fluids could, uh, communicate with that vertical well. So before and if a permit is ever issued, we have to do an analysis of all the existing wells in the area, not just where they're located, but how they were developed, when they were developed, what formations, what were their depths, what cement plugs and, and casing was put in brown, and what was left behind, and the well is decommissioned. So we do quite a bit of engineering work on each and every one of those. And as a result, we have some options on, on whether we move forward with our project, uh, or work to mitigate those existing wells to ensure that there's no impacts. Uh, and we have, uh, re-entered a few vertical wells in Elbert County.
Yeah, in fact, as I was pleased when that, that was happening, because I was thinking about Engineering 101, where you learn about YouTube's. And if you, you pump that in there, and that should crack into, uh, water, uh, somehow get into that other well, you'd have water coming back to the surface.
There's, there's some very detailed rules on that. We follow those in, in all of the engineering work we do, and the plans we put together are viewed at the state level by the engineers there to ensure that they're, they're compliant and effective. Um, the other thing that's happening is, uh, the orphaned well program of the state has grown significantly over the last decade or so. Um, and in, I don't remember which piece of legislation it was, I think it was part of the SB one eighty-one we were making in, um, nineteen, twenty nineteen, when the law was passed, uh, that, that significantly expanded the orphaned well program and provided funding for it. So we, we are paying a fee now to the state commission for every permit we file, and, um, we're paying an annual fee when we register our wells, and a portion of our severance tax is going to fund that program. So that, that program now is decommissioning these orphaned wells at a much higher rate. They have funding to do so, and that is in large part due to the foreign asset treatment and stuff. So it's not a direct connection, but it was, uh, one means the other, essentially.
Good to see that speed. I think eight years ago, or seven years ago, I went to the, they have that annual oil and gas symposium out in Garfield for local officials. I, I am, I am not. But at that point, I know they were showing that there was only about twenty-five percent of the money they needed to address the orphaned wells currently, so, so it's up a lot. Yeah, good.
So I just, to clarify, that the GMT fees at Elbert County, are those for the building permit fees? Okay, so, original permit fees for permitting new wells is about that number? Well, for two thousand and twenty-one, it was that number.
Since two thousand and two.
Yeah, that, that was probably.
We haven't paid one recently, because the la, the last business we had with the community development, community end development services was probably for the, the cinnamon and variety projects. We, we secured those funds. We're paying, um, bank fees in the form of, uh, grade increments, uh, and review fees for, uh, these kind of special review cases like the pipeline. Um, and then the, the oil and gas well pads, uh, there's some administrative fees for the pad itself. And then each well we drill has, uh, what we were spudding against is the act of actually initiating drilling on the well. It's an industry term for when we spud a well, we go through the county for each, and well on that pad. Uh, we're not, we're not so much paying, we're maybe it's free. But we are, we have a, we have reimbursed the county for some, uh, road maintenance work, and we also perform some work on behalf of the county of the city for our permits. Uh, but we do, in front of that, uh, on that note, uh, we do have a, a very good agreement, operative agreement in place with County Road and Bridge, uh, and we have bonding in place to protect the county. So if we were not, uh, hold up our end of package, of course, we have every intention of doing so. But if there was, um, a problem with our responding in place to help ensure the county's paid for for any, any issues with the road, uh, situation.
Tell me about your trucking routes.
Uh, yeah, so we, we have, uh, as I mentioned, this road maintenance agreement with the county, it started with the single well, our first project. We selected the route in consultation with county staff, uh, and, and just build the road network in the area. Um, as we've added projects and wells to that, uh, most of them ended, uh, at a payment of three or four times now, to include, um, County Road one seventy-eight, County thirteen, County Road seventeen twenty-one, uh, County Line Road, uh, portion of government road. And, uh, we've actually modified and kind of took, oh, and then we've got some usage of County Road twenty-nine and County Road Bennett as well. Uh, and all of that, um, we've selected based on our needs, uh, the types, uh, volumes of traffic we propose, and, uh, some of the bridges, uh, we kind of think are not given the roads, for those roads. So we use the longer route, uh, that involves certain bridges, uh, for, uh, over size of the way, for that, so that's, uh, kind of.
That is good, because I think the paving of twenty-nine and much of Kiva Bennett was oil and gas impact fee grants back from DOLAs. So, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, and if, if there is, that's a, a great, boring, uh, question. But if there are, if there's ever work, the county's to, to communicate with the state, with the state, uh, and, and seek some of that, the grant money, that's like the, 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 sort of programs, right? Um, if there's anything we can do to support that effort, to help provide data, to help, uh, answer your arguments, for the needs, don't hesitate, good job. We're, we're happy to, uh, provide the tools for it, I have.
Thank you.
We appreciate your openness to communicate with us and be available, because I know Max has, um, received calls from me, and he calls me and comes in, and we have, um, open communication, and it's very helpful, especially when we're, you know, this ends up in ad valorem tax, and it's very helpful. Thank you very much.
So I'll try to be calling soon, and I, and I will, uh, extend my last time to county, uh, electrician and staff, and any interest. I have cards, uh, I can, I can regularly reach out. We will, we will happily take pleasure in this stuff firsthand. We're very proud of what we do, we take great pride, uh, in, in our operations, and, uh, and we'd love to share.
I know Road and Bridge was out, a couple of visits with BJ. That's good.
I, I, I got my first diploma in petroleum engineering in nineteen sixty-eight, and technology has changed a bunch since then. I remember drilling an eight thousand vertical well would take thirty to forty days, and you just did it. Now you're drilling eight thousand foot deep, twenty-two or three thousand feet horizontal, and you're doing it in less than ten days. Uh, the, the way you're handling oil and gas stuff, like, uh, flare stacks and all those kind of stuff, we used to be able to get away with a lot more than you get away with now. But most importantly, uh, the fracking and how you're hand, handling the, uh, uh, oil and gas, I really appreciate that. One of the things for the public, you might explain how compressors help the well.
Max kind of alluded to that, is, uh, you know, when we had that pipe, we showed the pipeline map, and then we had the original operator, we had a lot of upset conditions. So it puts back pressure on the wells. So if you can kind of think about it, is the reservoir's, uh, kind of like a balloon. It's all full, full of oil and natural gas, and it's pressurized up. And so we're trying to drain that balloon. So any back pressure on that balloon keeps that, or slows the flow of the fluids and gas, or it could actually block it eventually. You could have some blockage or some damage. So what the compressors do is take that back pressure off the well and continue to let those fluids and gas freely flow. And then it maximizes production, which maximizes revenue. And so, that's the main purpose.
Oh, very much appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah. Max, it's always good.
I have exactly the right number of cards.
All right. So we're, I agree.
I gotta get rid of it. We have a slightly new logo, so these cards are, I'm just honoring my old cards. on in my old cards.
Oh, good.
Did you have any additional questions, or?
Okay, we generally don't, but go ahead, just one, and we'll finish up.
Boy, that's a loaded question. If, if I recall, I, I would say the average oil price during the Trump era was around $60 to $65 a barrel, and that's a window that we can operate in with some permit certainty. So with that permit certainty becomes, we become more efficient, and so we can live in that $65 world. And I don't know if you remember that early late-life piece that I showed you, is, you know, when we start getting into that $65 world, our margins are tighter, but we can live with those with some certain, certainty in development.
I think you had used 80 as just an example of the breakdown.
That's what the current, that's the current price right now.
Not your minimum operating.
So late, late in the maturity, after the first year or two, you guys are involved with a $10 a barrel cost after, after, is that what that's all?
Yeah, those costs are just to operate the well on a per-barrel basis. So we're usually, once you get in mature life, you're below $10 a barrel. If you're really good, you can get to five, but kind of industry...
So if you recovered your costs up in the first year or two?
Yes.
And then when it drops down to $13 a barrel, we're running on 10.
Correct.
Yeah, and those old 1970s vertical wells were bringing in $4,000 to $7,000 a year to the counties. I mean, they were operating as long as they were, they were making a little more than they were costing to operate, but...
It's a very cyclical industry. We have no control over price. All we can do is work to try and operate as efficiently as possible and make good investment decisions, because these projects are multi-year investments, multi-year payouts. So we mentioned, we're, we look at individual well economics, but if we can have good well economics, but still poor field or play economics, or vice versa, so it, it's, it's a little more complicated than we tried to illustrate here today, but, but, you know, ultimately, our goal is to develop the asset that we've identified here in Elbert County and do so viably and sustainably for multiple years with profit for the company. But we're still working on exactly how those numbers all come together.
I, I would say our model's built for a $60 to $80 world, we can live in that. 80's a little better, but, but like Max says, it gets complicated, and our services, our price structure changes too with services. If prices drop, things usually get cheaper. Right, yep, yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah, good point, yeah. We're hoping for 100, no.
Yeah, Dennis made a great point, though, that, that the industry relies heavily on vendors, suppliers, you know, parts, labor, materials, all of those things are subject to inflation, and when oil prices are up, inflation's up, when they're down, inflation can be lower, so it, it's a moving target.
And generally, for the county, knowing it's very volatile, we've been budgeting a year and a year, I mean, we don't budget to use revenues from oil and gas until they've been received, and we'll budget for the future for those versus anticipating. So, anyway, with that, we're going to close up for the day, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you so much.